Good morning. Today is the twenty-eighth day of March, if you can believe it. Uh, it's nine o'clock and the Board of Commissioners is in session. Both Commissioners, two Commissioners are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent currently. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. If you could introduce yourself for the record.
Tim Klein, Treasures Office.
I'm Amy Halli, HR.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Bob Carney, Operations.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Beth Ma, Treasure.
Paul Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Trent triple clerk.
Hey, we're all here. Well, a lot of people. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, first up, we have, uh, couple of resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two eight four nine. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Okay, um, I'll close the public hearing on, uh, resolution two eight four nine. Has to do with a referral and incentive program. It extends it. Uh, close the public hearing on resolution number two eight four nine. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution two eight four nine as listed on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, the, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the, uh, public hearing on resolution two eight five zero. I'll reluse sole source procurement access control system upgrades for the Ada County Sheriff's Office. Is there discussion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, uh, this is to extend the jail services to the jail campus.
Okay.
Um, there's, uh, approximately five hundred forty thousand dollars. As you know, it's a big lift. Uh, all the stuff is on that key control right now, so the access cards will be able to work.
Okay.
Once again, continue mixing the campus onto one card as opposed to having different access control. Costs different facilities.
Well, that's probably a pretty good idea then. All right, any other discussion? Uh, here now, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight five zero. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution two eight five zero as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now have, uh, a couple of procurement items.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, Ada County Procurement received five responses for bid two three zero four three. Ada County Sheriff's Office Havas Vehicle Equipment Purchase twenty twenty-three. And, uh, we would like to submit this letter of the proposals received in a recommendation for award for your consideration.
If you agree to the letter?
I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two three zero four three. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received five responses for bid two three zero four three. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Uh, the first bidder is ERS, Emergency Responder Services Incorporated, and they have a bid amount of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Bidder number two is Ensemble Solutions Group, and they have a bid amount of ninety-one thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars and one cent. Uh, bidder number three is McLaughlin and Erdley Incorporated, and they have a bid amount of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents. Bidder number four, Premier Vehicle Installation Incorporated, with a bid amount of seventy-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. And bidder number five is Dana Safety Supply, and they have a bid amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred eight dollars and twelve cents. After reviewing the bid submitted, it's recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order to Dana Safety Supply as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred eight dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, is there any questions or motions?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two three zero four three. Ada County Sheriff's Office Havas Vehicle Equipment Purchase twenty twenty-three to Dana Safety Supply in the amount of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twelve cents.
I second the motion.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, our second item is a, um, review of the bids received and award recommendation for goodness services fifty thousand to one hundred thousand. And this is for bid two three zero four eight, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Night Vision Devices and Accessories. And Ada County Procurement received five responses for, uh, this bid as well, and would like to submit this letter of the proposals received and a recommendation for award for your consideration.
Okay.
Uh, letter dated March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two three zero four eight. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received five responses for bid two three zero four eight. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Focus Camera LLC, and they have a bid amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. Bidder number two is Pro Force Marketing Incorporated, and they have a bid amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ten cents. Bidder number three is Steel Industries. They have a bid amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Bidder number four is V Prime Tech Incorporated, and they have a bid amount of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents. And bidder number five is TNVC Incorporated, and they have a bid amount of fifty-two thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty cents. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order to TNVC Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. How many night vision devices is that?
Yeah, just, just one.
Just one?
But I'd have to check our specifications on that to be sure.
Whoa.
I know, I know they're very expensive, but I was gonna ask the same question.
Oh.
I, I can go follow up with you on that pressure and send you the quantity.
Okay. All right, is there any questions or, uh, a bid or a motion?
Let's just go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two three zero four eight, Ada County Sheriff's Office Night Vision Devices and Accessories to TNVC Incorporated in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty cents.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have now, uh, one more of our business with the operations. A change order number one. Arpa Boise River Stabilization Project, two zero two three. Agreement number one five one three two, a decrease of fourteen hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this one's pretty straightforward. Um, in preparation of the green belt replacement in, uh, large area over by the HP Campus by, um, right along the river, of course, we had to stabilize, um, the bank. Uh, that project is complete. Didn't take very long, and, uh, we didn't use fif- one thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars, so we're returning that, uh, to the budget.
Okay. Is there a motion on the change order?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change order number one. Arpa Boise River Stabilization Project twenty twenty-three as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We now have, uh, licensing. We have a couple of catering permits, and we have a hundred and forty-one license renewals. Is there any questions or, uh, motion? Okay, that's been busy.
It's that time of year.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including two catering permits and one hundred forty-one license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we are privileged to have a report from the clerk's office. And the clerk's here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, uh, there's two agreements on, uh, the agenda today that probably have some interest that I thought I'd just explain a little bit. One is with Harris. Uh, it's a software company that, um, allows, uh, for notification, uh, if someone were to sign up for it, uh, to be notified of anything that gets filed on, uh, uh, with regards to their, uh, recordings within the county. Uh, this is a result of, uh, some folks, uh, being swindled out of their property as people will come in and do quick deed claims, uh, falsify those things, and then the person's none the wiser for it, and they, they sell them out from underneath them. Um, and so this is just a, a service to the public. It's in line with our mission to serve the public in a way that builds trust. Uh, it's at no cost to the public. Uh, they can go on and sign up for these notifications, and if anything gets filed with regards to their property or anything else that, uh, is associated with them, they'll get an email notification. It's kind of like a, you know, LifeLock, uh, service that you provide for your identity. This is kind of property lock, uh, for lack of a better term, uh, to allow people to know if someone's trying to mess with, uh, their filings within the courthouse, so. Uh, we're excited about that. Uh, it's received some positive, uh, feedback, uh, so far from folks.
Are you familiar with that happening in Ada County?
I'm not familiar with any case here in Ada County, but it has happened in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I've seen the TV as.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So is it only for, uh, recorded properties? Could it be used for court cases or, or other?
Right now, it's just for recorded properties. Uh, I, I don't know that it could be, uh, used for court cases as well. I'd have to look into that, but.
How do we get the word out to people to, that this service is available?
Uh, we've put out a, uh, a media, um, launch with it on our social media. I'm happy to partner with the Commissioners if they want to feed, send it out on their feeds as well. I could have Nicole, our, our CIO, get with you, give you the information and what we've, we've put out there for it, so you could plaster it as well, if you'd like.
Yeah, that was my question, getting, getting it out to people so they know they, that it is, that it is an option for them to sign up for.
Yeah. Uh, the other one we have is, I'm super excited about. Saul's on here as well, but, uh, I'll just briefly explain the the Severa contract with, again, goes to our, our core nature of being transparent. Uh, there's a lot of folks, uh, a couple of years back that had some, uh, questions about the integrity of the election in twenty twenty, uh, and, uh, they wanted to see, um, ballots. Um, we have, uh, attempted through this program, uh, to develop a system in which, uh, the public could go on and see every image of every ballot associated with any election and any office. Uh, and so what will happen is we image those, those ballots right now as we count those ballots. We have cast vote record that records how we recorded that image. They're gonna use that information and be able to create a database in which you can go on and hopefully, again, this is all experimental. We're, we're developing this right now, because I don't think this exists anywhere else. To be able to go on and click on, for instance, your race, and you can pull up all the ballot images associated with just your race, and if you would like to review all of them, you could. Um, there are some nuances we have to get through. Again, we want to protect the private ballot. Uh, there's nothing on our ballot as printed that would give identification to a vote, uh, anyone that who's voted on it. But we do have the occasional voter that likes to identify their own ballot by writing something on it. Um, and so we're gonna have to work through those, uh, specific instances. Uh, again, it, it is not a done deal. Uh, we're right now just in the developmental phase of this, and that's what this contract is for the next little while, is try to develop that program. Uh, we may hit, hit some hiccups along the way, uh, but this is something that we really want to do so that we give greater access to the public, uh, on elections and greater visibility and ease the pain of them having to come in and request looking at those things and having create a bunch of work for us as well uh, in the election staff to be able to provide all those public records requests. So we're just like, hey, let's put them out there. Everybody can see them, so that's the direction we're heading. Um, again, it's not a done deal. Uh, we'll have a decision, uh, along the way to make sure that we're doing it in accordance with the law and the constitution of protecting the private vote, uh, but also providing the best transparency we can for, for folks out there, so. So, you got anything to add? Did I muck that up?
No, I think you got it just right, Trent. Um, you know, one thing I'll say about Severa and the company is they, they do work with a variety of secondary states, including ours, uh, to provide election stats, uh, interfaces already. Um, so they're a proven company, and they have a great product. Um, but as Trent said, we are, uh, leading the way on this one. I'm only aware of one other jurisdiction in Texas right now that's working to try and do some sort of ballot image, uh, production like this, and so it's, uh, we're just thinking outside the box and really trying to provide that full transparency, uh, for our voters and for our candidates, uh, and I'm excited about it.
All right. This, this company, where is it based? Is it an American company?
It's an Amer- well, it's an American company, I'm sure. I don't know where they're based. Oh, where are they?
Uh, they're based out of Massachusetts.
Well, um, that keeps with our, uh, policy of full transparency, and you might, if, uh, you know, we, we had a pretty big hearing a week ago, and on Wednesday, we had a stack of documents this high, and we made them all available to the, to the public. All they had to do is go on our website and they can look at it. And, and we've done, we've done that every time that there's been a large, uh, interest in one of our public hearings. And we do it primarily to, to, to full transparency and to save our staff time, because then when there's, when there's a public records request, we'd just go there, there, there they all are. Go look at them.
Everything's there.
Everything's right there. And so we don't have to go search the records to get them the documentation, but full transparency is always good.
It is, and in our case, uh, you know, there, despite what some people may think, there are no secrets in elections. Uh, we're, we're running, running the elections the way they should be, and we're not trying to hide anything, so we're hoping that this move will help, uh, uh, a certain percentage of the population gain a little bit more trust in, in us and, uh, understand that we're just trying to uh, represent the exact will of the people a- as they vote, so.
So you could, you could do your own recount theoretically.
You could actually do your own recount if you wanted to.
It's neat. I think if people marked their ballot to identify, they'd probably waive their right to have a secret ballot if they put a mark on it.
That's a question for the legal folks, not me.
All right, anything else, uh?
Beyond that, we're just, uh, full speed ahead on the budgets, so over the coming month or so, um, that's where our minds are gonna be at. Uh, I know Saul's mind will be in another election coming up in May, uh, but, uh, he's got his team, uh, well-prepared for that, I think, so.
Well, looks like you still might have a, uh, March election next year.
You know?
Depends on what happens with the governor's.
We'll do, we'll do what we're told.
Okay, I like that.
Those original ballots are still kept, right? The original ballots are still kept?
They are kept under, uh, law for a period of time.
That's what I'm saying.
And then they are, then they are destroyed.
So that.
This way, we'll have, we'll have we'll have in perpetu- perpetuity these images, assuming we can afford the, the the data storage, uh, that comes with this, because that'll be pretty big, especially when we get into presidential elections and such.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a claims journal. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have, uh, personnel actions. We have a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that summary sheet remained on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, do we have anyone here from the Assessor's office? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Now we have our distinguished treasurer with us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the Treasurer's Office is, uh, keeping an eye on the property tax legislation. As you're well aware, the governor vetoed it yesterday. Um, said it was swift to, um, pass a new bill. Um, so we're watching to see what the House does with that, um, and the governor as well. And I say this because this could have significant impact on our office. Um, so we're watching to see what the terms of it might be, um, working with the legislature and, um, you know, depending, depending what passes, we'll be working very closely with the Tax Commission, um, your IT department, um, to pull it off. So that's, we're, we're keeping an eye on this week.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of people keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Uh, I, I think they just extended their session about ten days.
At least.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Ben. All right, we have approval of minutes. Uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as def- identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a couple of agreements, uh, with the, uh, Barber Park and Education and Event Center. Uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have ten agreements. Uh, is there any questions or any discussion on any of the agreements? Including the two that, uh, our clerk just went over with us. Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the ten agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is weekly indigent items. Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unless there is there any other business to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we're in recess. We're in recess. Good morning. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three, uh, Commissioners are present. I T guys here. And are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. I'll accept a, a motion on the claims, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the claims journal dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three regarding E M S expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have a couple of personnel actions. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on, remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll ask Mr. Davidson if he gives an A M S update.
We're doing great.
All right, we're doing great. Yeah. We don't have any A M S people here today, so we're doing great. Okay, we'll be in recess.